Good evening and welcome to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting. It is Monday, June 17, 2019. Clerk?
Alderman Nashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bavir.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Kreschel.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Yes, I understand the mayor is absent and I'd like to make a motion to ask or to select Alderman Berry as the chairman for the city council meeting this evening.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, now on to the pledge of allegiance. Wow. [laughter] And to the public, which stands one nation on God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as one. Okay, let's put that away. And tonight, we do have a proclamation honoring Fay Johnson on her 90th birthday. Fay, if you would like to come up with your family.
I'll do the best I can, but when I have to work.
And I know you'll do well. Would you care to sit?
No.
Do you want to stand? Okay. Want to turn around, face the camera? Show everybody how pretty you are.
Where's everybody going?
Okay. Whereas Fay Johnson was born to Clifford and Stella Johnson of Chicago, Illinois, on July 4, 1929. And whereas Fay met and married Clifford Allen Johnson on December 23, 1950. And whereas, in 1960, Fay was the first Democratic precinct captain in DuPage County, carrying her precinct for John F. Kennedy. And whereas Fay and Cliff moved to Warrenville in 19...I'm missing a date. 61. And whereas Fay and Cliff were members of bowling leagues at the Warrenville Bowl. And whereas Fay designed the Warrenville Radio and TV Store addition to their home at 2S 523 Batavia Road in 1965. And whereas Fay was the picture lady at Serif Warham Homes School for many years, bringing art appreciation to countless Warrenville children. And whereas Fay was a reporter for the Aurora Beacon Newspaper for many years. And whereas Fay and Cliff, along with numerous other Warrenville citizens, participated in a variety of musical and variety show fundraisers at the community center. And whereas Fay was honored as one of Warrenville's Best Dressed Women. And whereas Fay and her husband Cliff worked on numerous Warrenville incorporation attempts and were deeply involved in this successful effort in 1967. And whereas Fay was a member of the Veteran of Foreign Wars Auxiliary and was president for one term. And whereas Fay was a member of the Warrenville Fire Protection District Auxiliary. And whereas Fay and Cliff, along with several other households, were responsible for answering the Warrenville Fire Protection District fire phone and activating the fire siren to call all volunteers, which was installed in their home. And whereas Fay and Cliff were honored in 1976 as Citizens of the Year by the Warrenville Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Fay became a realtor and for 30 years brought and welcomed countless residents to sunny Warrenville. And whereas...
That a girl.
And whereas Fay is always one of the first to welcome new faces to Trinity Lutheran Church. And whereas Fay is a mother of four, grandmother of nine, great-grandmother of five, and great-great-grandmother of two. Now, therefore, I, Claire Berry, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Warrenville, do hereby commend and honor Fay J. Johnson for her contributions and many years of service. Thank you. I'm so happy to know you. Come on over and say a few words for us. Here, just stay right there.
Oh, I forgot, this might come with it.
Just say a few.
Whatever I did for Warrenville was good because I tried. And it was here. And I raised my kids here. And Cliff and I enjoyed having a business here. And I'm glad to be here. I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you very much. I'm done.
And we appreciate you. Come over. Here, you know what? Let me do this. There we go. I just wanted to invite anyone here to Mom's open house party that we're having Saturday from 1 to 3 at Trinity Lutheran Church. No gifts. If you want to purchase something, purchase some books for Johnson School, which, as you know, is named after my dad. And I guess that's it. Okay. Thank you. Here you go. Love you too, Dad.
Am I ready?
You're done. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation by the Little Friends School. Gentlemen, if you'd like to come up?
I got a look, okay. Well, thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. My name's Mike Briggs. I am the president and CEO of Little Friends. And thank you for this time and opportunity to talk to you a little bit about Little Friends. We are excited about the potential move that is in the works and planned for June of 2020. This is an incredible opportunity for our organization. And so what we thought we'd do is that while people seem to know that Little Friends does a lot of good work, not everybody knows what we do. So we thought we'd take just a couple of minutes just to tell you what our organization does and with that, some of the things that you can anticipate with regard to Little Friends being in Warrenville. With regard to the work that we do, we spend a great deal of time dealing with life skills and providing the individuals that we support quality of life. How we do it is through multiple programs that are targeted, that are working with children starting as early as 18 months old and literally adults through end of life. I can tell you what makes us unique in comparison to any other program that I've evaluated in Illinois. And I can tell you that I've not found any other program in Illinois that does what we do in terms of the continuum of services that we have and the continuum of life, starting as early as 18 months, with diagnostic evaluations for children who might be on the autism spectrum through end of life and quite honestly have helped individuals with hospice. Briefly, there are four programs, one of which is the Center for Autism. The Center for Autism, where it plans to go, and just quickly, while you've read your materials, the building that we are acquiring and purchasing is currently occupied by Edward Hospital and the Edward Hospital Sleep Center. The Little Friends Center for Autism has 10 therapy rooms. The current sleep center has 10 therapy rooms. It literally is a perfect drop-in and fit in terms of what we intend to do. The Center for Autism does work with diagnostic evaluations. We also do ABA therapy, speech therapy, occupational therapy, and social skills groups for young children and adolescents.
Next.
Our school programs, this is another thing that will be moving into the facility. We currently have two facilities or two schools on the Naperville campus, one in our Downers Grove campus. The idea is to combine all of the programs into the one facility that would be in Warrenville. Two of the schools focus primarily on children with autism and dealing with the autism spectrum. The range of support ranges now from, it was age 5 to 22. We've now started early childhood this summer and will offer early childhood programs with children as young as three years old up to age 22. We also offer, as part of our program, we have a high school that deals with adolescents that are dealing with social and emotional challenges. And so that deals with kids that are in the range age of age 14 to 18. It's age-appropriate academic work, but we spend a lot of time in therapy, trying to help children deal with some of their own internal challenges from a social and emotional standpoint. Next is our residential program. We currently operate or own 38 homes. While we own 25, we operate 38. We provide residential support to 102 children and adults, primarily adults. In doing that, the homes are scattered across DuPage and Will County. But in terms of the services we offer, we offer everything from intermittent support to 24/7 care, depending upon the individual's needs in terms of what we're trying to work with. And then the last program that we have is in our Downers Grove facility, and that's our adult services program. We offer multiple things related to opportunities for individuals to work as well as develop life skills. We actually have a couple of businesses over there that provide employment opportunities for the individuals that we care for. It's been in operation a long time. The operation in Downers Grove will not be moving in any part, other than the One Bridge High School. The operation itself will be moving to, or staying, rather, in Downers Grove.
Next, please.
In terms of size, just to give you perspective, we currently, right now, the number I got this evening before heading over is we're now at 420 full and part-time employees. So we are a sizable organization. We anticipate being in the building about 170 in terms of employees, bless you, when we have school going on. In terms of the number of clients that we serve, we currently serve about 800 clients. We actually provide training for service providers that are in the field of autism. And between training for those service providers and parents, we trained over 1,200 people last year in terms of the work that we do. One of the things that's kind of interesting about the field of work that we do is that there are a lot of organizations, about 210,000 organizations nationwide, that help people that have developmental disabilities. Of that, there are only 10,000 organizations whose annual revenues exceed $10 million. Our revenues as an organization exceed $15 million. So it puts us in a category that's in the top 5% of the United States in terms of what we do.
Next, please.
I would say you may have saw there, our vision of where we want to be is to be the best agency in Illinois. And this facility is absolutely perfect for what we want to do. And we are absolutely thrilled with the opportunity to be able to move there. And so we're excited about the opportunity and appreciate the support that we've received from the city in terms of what we're trying to do. That being said, this is just a picture that we had a couple of issues with regard to traffic and bus flow, and you can fly through this real fast. That's been addressed and is a part of what we'd agreed to in terms of the zoning requirements.
So next, please. One more, please.
What's going to be really cool is there's a courtyard in the building. We're going to enclose that so that the kids are not visible from the road. And we're going to put in a full, the entire courtyard where there's currently parking right now, will turn into a playground for the kids. So it's going to be really exciting in terms of what we plan to do. We need some storage for being able to make sure we can mow the grass and equipment to deal with snow removal. And this is our proposed timeline, which is, we intend to go out to bid here very shortly, with the idea that we would be closing on the building in February when the lease ends that's currently in place for Edward Hospital. We would do renovation and the idea would be that we would move in on or about the end of June of 2020, assuming all were to go well. That's the timeline that we're working on. So we're now into that window of time where we haven't quite hit one year, but we're close to it in terms of what's going on. So with that, this is just a picture of the building in case you hadn't seen it, with some diagrams as to where we intend to use it. As you look above, the left half of the building will be school and the right half will be the Center for Autism at what would be the north part of the building, followed by administration. And then the high school for those challenged by social and emotional issues will be at the, what would be the southernmost eastern part of the building. So that's how we've laid it out in terms of how we plan to use the facility. It is a significant gain for us. It goes from 51,000 to 74,000 square feet. It provides us room to grow. The sad thing is, is that we're in a business that's growing. And the needs of the things that we do unfortunately are there, and more and more children are being diagnosed. And we want to be there to be able to provide help for those children and their families, which we believe is really important as well. So with that being said, we really appreciate the opportunity. We're excited about, as I said, the support. Thank you for the opportunity this evening. Just to tell a little bit about Little Friends, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them. Otherwise, we'll obviously let you guys do what you need to do.
Alderman?
Yes, sir.
I just have one question. That is, the support that you receive of the 15.5 million, where's your primary source of income?
It really varies. We have, we're fairly well diversified. We receive roughly $7 million of revenue from about 52 different school districts scattered across eight counties. We, all of the schools, our agreements are with the independent school districts. We have, our Center for Autism is basically an insurance program where it comes from individuals' insurance or individuals themselves in terms of the services that they get. And then the adult programs are supported through the Department of Human Services with the state. The interesting thing and a question that's often asked of us is, well, because it's the state, are you paid on time? Because money comes from Medicaid and federal government, it cannot sit at the state. It has to be passed through. There's been a court order that forces that. And so we've not faced any issues with regard to being paid.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
You're more than welcome.
And welcome to Warrenville, Little Friends School.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Happy that you're here. Thanks. Okay, citizens' comments? I have...
Madam Chair, may I remind everybody to turn off your cell phones, please? I'm getting a feedback on my microphone, so somebody's cellphone is still on. Thank you.
Okay. Citizens' comments. We have two people have signed up tonight, Patrick O'Connor and Bob Seibert. Patrick, if you'd please come to the microphone?
I am at 3S 5701 in Warren, Illinois. I'm here for a reason. Is I told by what happened is I always come back to out, to my friend. We go down the way and we park. And I see, I always see the people park double-double, one more time. They park here and the other one parked there. Sometimes people like to park that way. And I'm the Warrenville, no, no, Wood Lane Avenue. And like on the other side, the same thing. People like to park double-double and block my thing. Sometimes I like to have to walk around it and get to my door. Okay? I don't know what to do. Is I don't, I don't understand why that would be total okay. The people park is like, it's like here, it will be like here. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
I'd like to reference the Alden Foundation Public Hearing. I asked the Alden Group if they would seek a property tax reduction similar to Monarch Landing. Their response, currently, we are paying property taxes. Currently, I think is a very poor choice of words. So I asked, in the future, would you be paying property taxes or asking for reductions? They stated, no commitment to future payments in property taxes. This creates a problem with the TIF because that would reduce TIF revenue. This hits the underlying taxing districts in two ways. First, at the end of the TIF, they are foregoing property tax to get a large benefit at the end of 23 years. If this occurs, there would be no benefit. Also, currently, they are receiving property tax revenue from two houses on the property plus two vacant lots. So they would lose this and lose any benefit at the future. In TIF I, we did not allow this to happen because there was a financial agreement with the developer not to allow the non-tax companies, institutions to come into TIF I. I also asked if there was in place any monitoring of prospective residents for prior criminal convictions citing the Aurora situation that is current. The response, we follow the Illinois Housing Authority's regulations for financial conditions. So I then asked, are there any yardsticks measurements of who would not be allowed to rent? Received the same response. So I can only assume that there are no controls on who would be able to rent these residencies. I also spoke to the fire chief, Danny Rogers, asked him what it costs to send an ambulance and a fire truck into this development with the proper men. He stated it would cost $800. Medicare, I asked him, because most of these individuals will either be on Medicare or Medicaid because they are subsidized apartments. I asked him what Medicare paid. He said about $220. So that means that the individual taxpayers outside the TIF, every time the ambulance goes into this development, would have to pay through their taxes the additional $580. And we know, since it's a TIF, the dollar amounts that would go to the fire district are not going there, and that's why the fire district had to get an increase in why the taxpayers are paying more.
Okay, now we have official and staff comments. Obviously, the mayor is absent this evening. We go to the clerk. Okay, the treasurer?
No report.
Okay. Alderman? Alderman Goodman?
I just wanted to remind everybody, in case you don't know, that the judges are coming. America and Bloom is going to be sending two judges here to Warrenville to evaluate our community on July 8th and 9th. So we've all got a couple of weeks to plant some nice flowers, trim back the weeds, and make this town look fantastic. So to everybody who's watching at home and to everybody who's here, consider this your homework. Let's make Warrenville beautiful for when the judges come so that we can all be proud of how our community looks and so that when they judge us, they'll think we're great because we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No other comments? Okay. Administrator?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
And attorney?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Thank you. Now we have the approval of the agenda. A motion? Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda for the June 17, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Okay. Motion passes. And the approval of the minutes. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the minutes of the June 3, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting. To approve the minutes of the June 3, 2019 City Council Closed approve the minutes of the June 3, 2019 City Council closed session, and to approve the minutes of the June 10, 2019 Public Works and Infrastructure Committee of the whole regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now on to the consent agenda. A, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance O2019-31 approving the easement agreement for 27W 650 Warrenville Road. B, accept Plan Commission recommendation and waive second reading and pass ordinance O2019-32 approving Little Friends School at 27555 Deal Road. C, accept Plan Commission recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance O2019-33 approving Riley's subdivision Platt at 3S 621 Curtis Avenue. D, accept Plan Commission recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance O2019-34 approving text amendments to zoning ordinance 1018 regarding solar energy systems. E, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2019-24 approving an agreement with Five Alarm Fireworks Company for a July 4, 2019 fireworks display and authorizing Mayor Brummel to execute the agreement. F, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2019-25 for the expenditure of motor fuel tax revenue in the amount of $305,517 during a city fiscal year 2020 for the maintenance of streets and highways by municipality as required under the Illinois Highway Code. G, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2019-26 approving the pole attachment license agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC and authorize the city administrator to execute it. H, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2019-27 awarding the contract for the Warrenville Road reconstruction and resurfacing project to Geneva Construction Company of Aurora, Illinois in the amount of $1,058,132.51. I, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2019-28 approving a contract with Thomas Engineering Group LLC for construction engineering services for the Warrenville Road reconstruction project in the amount of $78,995.84 plus reimbursable expenses. J, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2019-29 rejecting all bids received on April 30, 2019 for the Fox Hollow Lift Station rehabilitation project and authorizing the purchase of lift station replacement components from Metropolitan Pump Company for $66,579. K, accept staff recommendation and approve the City of Warrenville fireworks and pyrotechnics permit to five alarm fireworks for the July 4, 2019 fireworks display. L, accept staff recommendation and approve the closure of certain local streets for the annual Independence Day parade route, parade staging, and Cerny Park Festival as stated in the April 1, 2019 letter from the Warrenville Friends of the Fourth Committee Chairman, Colin Wilkie. M, accept staff recommendation and approve the purchase of a new Public Works pickup truck through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative in the amount of $27,445 from Curry Commercial Center of Frankfurt, Illinois. N, accept staff recommendation and approve the purchase of a new Public Works pickup truck through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative in the amount of $27,279 from Curry Commercial Center of Frankfurt, Illinois. O, accept staff recommendation and approve the purchase of a new Public Works chipper through Sourcewell, a purchasing cooperative, in the amount of $44,799.50 from Alexander Equipment Company of Lisle, Illinois. P, accept staff recommendation and approve the purchase of a new Public Works Vector truck through Sourcewell, a purchasing cooperative, in the amount of $334,837.24 from Jet Vac Environmental of Island Lake, Illinois. Q, accept staff recommendation and approve the purchase of a new Public Works sewer televising camera with lateral launch through Sourcewell, a purchasing cooperative in the amount of $182,594 from Jet Vac Environmental of Island Lake, Illinois. R, accept zoning and Board of Appeals recommendation regarding Lexington Trace subdivision advertising signage variation. S, receive and file minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission regular meeting held on April 11, 2019. T, receive and file draft minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals regular meeting held on June 6, 2019. U, receive and file report of invoices paid up to June 12, 2019 in the amount of $61,785.32. V, authorize expenditures for invoices due honor before July 1, 2019 in the amount of W, receive and file report of debit card expenditures for the month of May 2019 in the amount of $11,983.91. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor Proton, Claire Barry.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we have a roll call, please.
Alderman Creswell?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, we have nothing under the regular agenda, we have nothing under unfinished business, but we have two items under new business. The first one is an information presentation by DuPage Metropolitan Emergency Response and Investigation Team, DuPage, just known as DuPage Merit. Okay. Oh, Chief?
Thank you. You've heard me talk in the past about the construction and the consolidation of several of special service assistance groups within DuPage County that all the municipalities relied upon. The DuPage County Chiefs of Police Association in late spring of 2018 envisioned a concept where we would consolidate all of these entities, and that being the Major Crimes Task Force and Fiat and DuPage Chiefs IMAT, along with the Sheriff's Department, into one group that would provide these specialized services for all 38 municipalities within DuPage County. So based on that, we had a shared services subcommittee that consisted of the following people. These are all Chiefs of Police, the Sheriff's Department, large entities like Naperville, and we even had a representative from Aurora, because part of that's in DuPage County. And, if you can hit the next slide, please. What we have in our current structure, you see, is the Major Crimes Task Force, which did basically homicides and attempted homicides. You had Fiat, which is a felony investigative assistance team that was much more broader scoped than what they provided than the Sheriff's Department and then the DuPage County Chiefs IMAT. Well, what we had was, we didn't have consistency in that this department may use the Sheriff's Department for forensics, whereas this department may use Fiat for forensics and what have you. So, we felt we have some of the best police officers in the state here in DuPage County. So we said, you know, if we could get everything together. So what you see on the right, beginning July 1 of 2019, we're going to have one countywide task force, which will mean any municipality that's a member of this will make a call if they need anything as far as canine services, investigative services, special weapons, crisis negotiations, what have you. And a member of the DuPage County Merit team, they would be the ones that would be responding to this. The nice part about this is that there is no increase in the amount of money that it costs to be a member currently. It's $3,500 a year to belong to Fiat and $500 for the Major Crimes Task Force. The dues will remain the same for member agencies at $4,000. The governance, if you flip that over, please. The governance is a 12-member executive board. Initially, we're going to be meeting monthly and then possibly transition to quarterly meetings. These will be the people that will be approving budgetary expenses and already the policies and procedures that we have written up for our guidelines regarding this. Thank you. Just on the financial side of it, as I said before, the dues will remain the same, it's $4,000 per agency. Monarch Accounting Group was contracted with being reimbursed through the DuPage Chiefs Association, and what we found is that we had to have to close the books, so to speak, on the Major Crimes Task Force and Fiat before we could begin accepting money from Merit as an entity. So what they did was, DuPage County Chiefs contracted with Monarch to do an audit and closeout, which has been accomplished. That's been approved last week by the board. What we're doing now is that we had signed the EIN/FEIN documents for the issuance of W9s, and we'll be operating with Merit as a 501(c)(6) IRS organization, which is a not-for-profit taxable. We have a detailed budget proposal that has been submitted, and we'll be reviewing that next week at an executive board meeting of Merit. We'll need to prepare three-year budget projections for Merit, which we've already done. We have a set of bylaws, and as I said before, in order to accept money from Fiat and Major Crimes, we had to do this audit where we closed the books. So that's being held right now. And lastly, part of presenting this is that the next item, item nine, was this IPSA, this Intergovernmental Police Services Assistance Agreement, so that we can begin operating. And essentially, it's the same one that we had as a member of Fiat. This was authored by the law firm of Ansel Glink, it was reviewed by the State's Attorney's Office, the Civil Division of DuPage County State's Attorney, the law firm of Knippen, Knight and Siento, and also IMRA, as well as our attorney perusing this. So, you'll see the Merit structure, and basically, it consists of three components, and it's tactical operations, special operations, and investigative operations. We're going to have approximately 300 people that will be belonging to this countywide task force that'll be servicing the 38 municipalities in DuPage County. This is going to be a tremendous advantage, not only for the public and the way that we're going to be able to address, respond to, investigate crimes and serious incidents, but also the wealth of experience our officers are going to gain, and they're going to be able to be members of this one metropolitan countywide task force that is going to be very busy, but again, will also be very large. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, and again, congratulations. I think we've mentioned this before, you're the chairman of this, so thank you very much. Just to clarify, so we will have officers assigned from Warrenville Police Department to this group, and they will, it just won't be random who's ever available, there'll be specific assignments?
That is correct. Everybody that was currently, everybody that was a member of Fiat or a member of the Major Crimes Task Force went through an interview process. Those people will automatically be grandfathered into Merit. However, we have an admittance policy and acceptance policy in Merit, and that, an officer has to have at least three years of experience, they have to have a recommendation of a supervisor. Obviously, some specialties are going to require more experience and time, somebody on the major crimes is going to require more, somebody that may be in crash investigation, a three-year level of experience would be acceptable. But they have to be recommended by their department, meet certain criteria, they're then interviewed by the executive board of Merit, which includes the component commanders, and then if they're approved, then they're taken on, the task force.
So do they have a term doing that, or they just stay on there until they want to rotate offer?
Yes, they stay on, usually, they have to make a minimum of a five-year commitment. But usually, we have most of our members, especially in SWAT and major crimes, that have got 15, 20 years plus of experience.
Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, great, thank you very much, and congratulations on being the chairperson of Merit.
Thanks.
Okay, B, we need a motion. Alderman Goodman?
I make a motion to accept the staff recommendation and adopt resolution R2019-30 approving an Intergovernmental Police Services Agreement, IPSA, for the purpose of DuPage Metropolitan Emergency Response and Investigation Team DuPage Merit membership.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other questions? Okay, we need a roll call, please.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Creswell?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we, the next thing on the agenda is closed session. Alderman Goodman?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of five ILCS 120/2 (C)(5), the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we again, need a roll call.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Creswell?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Motion passes. And now we need a motion to, no, no, a motion to adjourn, we're going into closed session. So that will be it for this evening, and thank you very much.
We do not anticipate any other business.
Oh, we do not anticipate any other business after the closed session. Thank you.